Okay, Madam Mayor, it is 6:03 and we are live.
I'm sorry?
I said it is 6:03 and we are live.
Great, good evening, everyone out there in TV land and everyone here in person. Welcome to the City of Lake Worth Beach Special City Commission Meeting here on Wednesday, May 18th at 6 o'clock. And this is regarding the Downtown Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council report from the surets that we had, which were very interesting and also a status of the contributing properties on South L Street and South K Street. So we have, it's a big agenda tonight, it's a big one, and we're here to listen. So tonight, I, we are first going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Stokes.
Hold on, Madam Mayor, let me call roll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor Betty Wright.
Here.
Vice Mayor Christopher McBoy is absent, Commissioner Sarah Maliga is also absent, Commissioner Kimberly South. Commissioner Ronaldo Diaz.
Here.
Right, now we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
We have a lot of familiar faces in the audience tonight, welcome back, Mr. Robinson. Good to see you too. All right, so I think it's just going to turn over to staff.
Sure.
Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Tonight, we're going to have a, what we call a in-progress presentation available to Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. This is to give an update on where we are in terms of the shred to place of this go and what our next steps are. I look at presentations, by exciting, there was a great deal of participation from a whole variety of people who moved business owners and residents. And so Dana has seen a lot of really good feedback. I'm going to turn it over to Dana to sort of give you the back on presentation, ask questions as you would like, and then provide the input and suggestions if you aren't necessarily able to.
Thank you. And for the record, Commissioner McBoy has entered the room. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners, how are you? Thank you, William, my name is.
You have to go right into the, I've learned you have to go right in because people out there can't hear you.
Yes. Okay, is that better?
Yes.
My name is Dana Little, I'm the Urban Design Director for Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. It's very good to see all of you as well, thank you for coming and visiting, and all of my new friends in the audience. Hopefully we'll remain friends after this evening. As William said, tonight's presentation is, we call the work in progress presentation. Historically, when we, as a regional planning council, do these public design surets, they're typically a full week long, and we would have the work in progress presentation at the end of that week. But we decided, in order to reach out to TV land and to have a special meeting, et cetera, to postpone it a week and a week and a half, I guess. It was actually two weeks ago exactly today that we, that we finished up the shred process. So what you're going to see tonight is about a week and a half worth of work. And it's meant to be a foundation for discussion on these, this plethora of issues that we, that we've discussed and debated and drew and chatted about throughout that week. So I'm going to try to go somewhat quickly, there's a number of slides, I'm getting.
Here comes Anne.
Help is on us. Here comes help.
Was that me or was that you?
That was me.
Okay, very good. Just a few interest slides, many of you were there on Saturday, the 30th, and we opened up with an opening presentation. I think everyone's aware that this is a, this is a joint venture, if you will, between the City of Lake Worth Beach, Lake Worth Beach CRA and us, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. For those of you that don't know, we are a public agency, there's 10 regional planning councils throughout the state. Our region happens to be Palm Beach, Martin, St. Lucie, and Indian River Counties. We cover 52 municipalities, and in a nutshell, we provide technical assistance to local governments. I get to do the fun stuff, which is the planning, architecture, public outreach, et cetera. But our, our, our agency actually delves into a lot of different areas. This is generally the study area that we looked at throughout, this is the wrong slide. That's not the FPC corridor, the FPC corridor is in red there, but, and US one. But nevertheless, the area in yellow is pretty much the study area that we were looking at downtown for the most part. And our, our core objective here is to assist the city and the CRA through this process to create alternative developments, redevelopment strategies for those parcels at K Street and First Avenue South and the block between L and M Streets, south of Lake Avenue. And tonight really is the first opportunity, not only to carry your thoughts, but it's really the first time that anybody has actually seen this presentation. I mean, I put it together, Williams saw it, but it hasn't been presented before. So this is about as fresh as it gets. And the, the objective tonight is to hear, are we going in the right direction? Did we hear what the community said on Saturday? Did we miss anything? I'm sure we missed things. And are there other issues and concerns that need to be addressed? And I hope to take copious notes and report back and continue to develop these concepts. And a closer look, you see there's Lake and Lucerne to the north, First Avenue South. And the areas in yellow are the subject properties, they were site one, two, and three, they're identified in the 2020, 2019, I think it was, I forget, 2020, requests or proposals. And while the RFP that was submitted, the response that was selected back then really only focused on the L and M area, we threw conversations with you as a board, but also with the community throughout the interview process leading up to this, found that it was necessary really to look at all of the properties that are within this area, because they all are interconnected in some way, whether it's through public ownership or availability of land or public parking or historic structures. There was a considerable amount of outreach, we're really impressed with, with the city's website capacity and created a website and got flyers out in English, Creole, and Spanish. And to that end, we had a great turnout on Saturday, I was really impressed. We started with this very provocative presentation, that was me, I'm just kidding. But we started out with a presentation to go over the history of how we got here, why are we here, what are we doing? And I actually went through, in some detail, the acquisition timeframes and all of that, leading up to the RFP, the election, which changed things, of course, part of that election was premised upon some of these issues. And then we got started, and for those of you that were there, first of all, I want to thank you. I, from, from what little I know, I believe that we had all walks of life, all opinions were represented there on Saturday, which is the best thing that we can have happen, and everybody was extremely well paid, I'm happy to report. There was a lot of laughter, there was a lot of debates, there were, you know, there were, you know, not always points of consensus, but that's exactly what this is meant to do, is to get some of these ideas and discussions out in the open. And you'll recall that you, for those of you that were there, you worked at tables with our facilitators, our team, there's Shalender there on the left, he's the one who done some of the most amazing drawings that you'll see. And we worked for a few hours, we had lunch brought in from Two Jays. Cheers out to Monada Cafe, who provided us 180 mini empanadas that morning, which were fantastic. But as we worked through the day, and we had approximately, not everybody signed in, but I believe we had nearly 70 participants, I'm trying to be conservative here, but in and out throughout the day. After lunch, we asked that each of the tables present their ideas back to the rest of us. And so we heard from you, neighbors, your community, what are the ideas? And then we start through this process, which is fun. I think we start to see threads of consensus, and it was pretty obvious what some of the threads of consensus were. But there wasn't total consensus, and I'm going to go through some of that in a moment. In each of the tables, there were seven tables, which alone represents a good turnout, developed their plans. And their plans were drawn, and they had notes on them, and they had stickies on them. And these are really archive documents for us, and we refer back to these throughout the course of that week to, to remind ourselves, you know, what, what some of the key points were. I will tell you right now, not every point or every idea that was brought up is being addressed this evening, that would be impossible. But what we did try to do was focus on those items that we thought were germane to the issues, and in some cases were actually very interesting and thoughtful that we hadn't even considered before. So some of what we heard that Saturday, and I can't read the first bullet point because there's something there, but I'm going to try to guess what I put there, which has to do with avoid large monolithic developments. And I spent a lot of time personally talking to, to folks throughout the week and really trying to figure out, what are some of the issues and what are the ways that we can address growth, development, maintaining the character of the town?
Actually, it's a really important point, because on that first line that you can't see, it said, avoid large assembled as a property incremental development, which I think is the thing that.
Yes, incremental development, maybe that term wasn't used, but that was a consistent theme throughout. There's a desire to have mixed use along Lake Avenue. Whether that's what size of that building, there's still some debate about that. Oh, I'm sorry, number three, is no monolithic block sized buildings, I cheated.
Got to watch you every minute.
I know. And ensure that there is environmental, there are viable pedestrian environments, you know, not the least of which include shade trees, with whatever sort of development improvements come along, whether that's part of the public sector or the private sector. Create more multi-grade spaces, utilize accessory dwelling units. I was really impressed with this because not most people in the general public know what accessory dwellings are, but I've heard a term that I had never heard before, which is gentle density, which should be, have an end quote on it. But I think that's, that's a, that's a really sort of lovely way to put it. In my profession, there's a term called the, the missing middle, some of you, some of us talked about that a little bit. And we really focused on that approach throughout our efforts during the week. Encourage small business incubators, that can meet a broad variety of things. We had conversations about that throughout the week, in existing and new construction. So think of ways to, to provide space, I had long conversations with folks who were like, you know, even the artists are getting gentrified now, how do we, how do you handle this? And in our real estate market in South Florida these days, I, I don't have that answer, it's, it's out of control. But, but it's something that needs to be in the frontal lobe so that we're trying to address it and learn from other places if we don't know the answers. Some folks said keep all of the historic structures. Some folks said keep some of the historic structures. And a few folks said, hmm, you know, it depends. There seemed to be, from at least my assessment, some support for relocating some of them, if that was necessary to open up space for, for more efficient development, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. What's the top line sentence?
Small scale historical incentive of architecture.
Right, the architecture is key, I heard that a lot with relative to the RFP, you know, the, the style, the aesthetic, you know, that's very important, especially in downtown. And I'm going to repeat that over and over again, the historic downtown area, because that's going to come back full circle. We've heard limit building heights to three stories. But we also have seen beautiful representations of taller buildings on Lake and three-story buildings on Side Street. So seek out shared parking opportunities, as an example, Church by the Lake. Not all onsite spaces, that's a tough thing to do. Tim Hernandez, who's the developer that was with us there all day, or all weekend and throughout the week, he will talk about this in a few weeks with you all, hopefully when we come back, that he's actually done some projects that have a combination of onsite and offsite spaces for rentals. And that's important, I think, because when you start trying to pile all of that parking onsite, it gets bigger and bigger and more and more, you know, untenable. This was interesting, I didn't realize, and I just live up the street, I didn't realize that there's a growing golf cart community here. It hasn't hit West Palm Beach yet, so I'm embracing myself. But, you know, one of the things that we, when we were working with Delray Beach, we told them, you know, if you could provide actual golf cart spaces somewhere at some of your, some of your parking lots or some of your businesses, those are almost like reserved spaces for locals. Because I'm not driving like a golf cart from West Palm down here. Do not consider a garage at K Street, do consider a garage. And we looked at, we looked at both of those alternatives. I think almost everyone that had an opinion about this was open to the idea of micro units in downtown. Smaller units, that being six, seven, eight hundred square feet, maybe even smaller. And then consider options for City Hall and consolidation of municipal functions. I'm going to cheat a little bit again, because I threw that in there, we didn't hear a lot about City Hall, but we heard a lot about municipal functions scattered throughout the city. And listen, I know, you know, you probably don't have $40 million sitting around to build a new City Hall, but it should be something that is, is, is on your mind. Because I know that there are, there are efficiencies of scale and efficiencies of bringing those, those together. And in fact, many of your community, those in your community, were trying to figure out ways to squeeze, you know, everybody wants Williams apartment over here.
Right.
Everybody likes Zooli in Air. But like, can we squeeze him into the museum, or can we squeeze him there? And, and there's a, there's a desire for more community space, performance space, which is exactly what this building is. So anyway, I'll keep moving.
You skipped a couple.
I did.
You skipped provide opportunities for smaller developers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I think you skipped to reconsider the density and height bonus program in downtown.
Yes, that one's even yellow. I consider the height, the density and height bonus program in downtown, I talked with William about this a couple of times, and it's something that we're going to float by you all. Because we, I'll get to that in a, in a little bit. But I think, at least from the folks that were there on Saturday, that came throughout the week, maintaining the historical character and scale of downtown. Okay, downtown's different than Dixie Highway, okay? And we talked about that a lot, but maintaining the historical scale and character downtown is, is very important, obviously. So for the next three or four days, we were in the studio at Hatch 1121. It was a perfect space, I really want to thank the CRA, I know that Emily and Chris are here this evening. It was perfect for us, and people know exactly where it was. Our team was very comfortable, we were able to work throughout the week. We actually had 15 or 20 visitors a day. So if you want to add all that up, we probably had, now, some of you are repeated. Yeah, 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 no, no, no stoppers, but, but in fact, we were, we were, we were graced with the, the Sunday group that meets every Sunday, they had their Sunday meeting at the studio, which was very interesting, they let me participate. But we did have good turnout throughout the week. I will say, we had one faux pas, we left a little bit early on Wednesday, and.
I heard about it.
Oh, did you hear?
I did, I did.
Well, we'll make.
Half an hour.
So parcel ownership, I, we went through this on Saturday, the blue is now currently owned by the CRA, it's in their ownership, and then the orange up there, the Chamber Commerce, is owned by the city. We talked a, a little bit on Saturday at the presentation about land use. The areas in question are in the downtown mixed use land use, which is part of the comp plan. And you can't see that, but like, for instance, the downtown zoning district, which is within the downtown mixed use land use, has a maximum density of 40 units per area. And that was some, that's very important, because that was a, that was a benchmark we were trying to achieve with some of these concepts. The zoning is interesting, it's downtown zoning, which is the, the highest, more intense zoning, facing Lake and Lucerne, and then mixed use east, which is the orange stuff. Though you'll notice the pink stuff, which is downtown, is also to the east for the full block. So we, I talked about that with some of the property owners as well. And this is important, I think this is very, this grew in importance for me and I think the team throughout the week. These are the boundaries of the Old Town Historic District. Okay, these are not, you know, these, these are legitimate, you know, nationally and statewide recognized historic district boundaries. And the more we talked with, with folks throughout the week, the more it became evident to us that maybe the rules within that, some of the bonus programs and stuff, should be tailored for this particular, for this particular district. Maybe some of the bonuses that apply throughout other parts of the city, which make total sense, maybe should be fine tuned a little bit for the most sensitive part of your downtown. Again, this is the general study area, we included the K Street parking lot to the left. There's the sites as they were represented in the RFP. And we were fortunate to have Anne Fairfax and her husband Richard there all day on Saturday. And they popped in a couple of times during the week, or no, they met on Sunday as well. And, you know, this, there were, which is really exemplary, it was a launching point for us, and we spent a lot of time looking at it and considering different, you know, obviously, most of it is positive, she even provided us with a financial pro forma for this project towards the middle of the week, so our developer teammate was looking at that as well. So I want to thank them for their efforts and the time they spent with us. So tour of the plant, this is typically where I take you through the quote-unquote master plant. Oh, we don't have a master. What we discovered was that we've got a lot of different scenarios, and this was unexpected. Originally, and in our scope, we talked about doing a light touch, a medium touch, and then a big, like, three different projects. But actually, there are so many parts and pieces that we looked at, and that there's almost, you could almost do multiple RFPs if you wanted, or multiple contingent sales of certain properties, which is details that we can get into in the future. But I wanted to point that out, because as we started to, as we were taking what we learned, what we heard, and trying to apply it to scale on the ground, there's just, and understanding the historic building typologies and building fabric of the town, we started looking at lots of ways to sort of try to achieve these objectives. We started with a lot of site analysis, a lot of character sketches, we spent a lot of time developing building typologies. I think building typologies, and what I mean by that is like, what is a townhouse? How many square feet is it? And, you know, how much space does it take to scale? Versus, you know, what is an Art Deco walk-up apartment building, two stories? What does that generate in terms of density? What is a three-story unit generate in terms of density? Because I think, to be fair, we were trying to achieve the densities that are already allowed today through certain bonus programs, but I'm going to come back to that later with a little twist. The scare, the scale and the character of the existing structures, you know? So we did a lot of initial sketches and vignettes, trying to get our brain around what it is we were going to do. We actually had, one of your residents wanted to buy this one from Shalender. I informed him that it's Treasure Coast property. We'll, we'll print the postcard and sell that, sell that back. And this, by the way, you know, he's, he is, he was appealing to my, to my appreciation, that's my favorite, one of my favorite buildings in, in Lake Worth, right there on the right-hand side. It's an apartment building, it's on Lucerne, I think it's like the 200 block. It was a single-family house, built for a doctor, a doctor built it years ago, but really beautiful, it's got that pronounced entry. So we came up with a whole variety of options, I'm going to try not to confuse you, but here we go. So this is option A for the L and M parcels. I'm kind of breaking it initially to L and M versus K Street, because I think it's going to make it a little less confusing, but understanding that pieces can be interchanged between the two. So you're going to see very similar approaches in each one of these options. Number one, we identify.
First, can, before you go too far, can you orient us a little bit, like, where's Lake, where's L and M? I can guess, but.
Lake Avenue is running east-west, it's immediately north where those words are. Now, M is to the right-hand side and L is to the left-hand side.
And then that's the alley.
That's the alley, that's the T alley. You see the green box that's up there near, near Lake? That is a, that represents a building footprint, with I guess a green terrace or something on top. Every one of these scenarios, and by the way, we looked at precedents, you've got two very interesting buildings, one that's occupied and for sale, very expensive, and one that's under construction right now. The, the one and the Alora, Alora. They're a little bit further east, but on Lake, and they, they occupy almost the, they occupy almost the identical footprint that's shown here.
Identical to the, to the green square.
To the green square. That doesn't show. Can I use the mouse? Is that possible? Will it read this part? Okay, that's, that's a.
Green square is a building.
Chamber of Commerce right now?
No, no, no.
Yes, it's the Chamber of Commerce right now, it's one part of the Chamber of Commerce.
So it would be a building with a green word?
That's, well, that's what's represented here, yes, there, there are variations on that. It also shows a little fountain there, right? But my point is just that the, those two buildings, one that's selling for $700,000 per unit, I think now, it is only 14 units, and the one across the street is going to be 12 units. It's the same footprint size, so there's already.
I wouldn't have guessed that.
Yeah, it's, it's very interesting. So as you head south, then, along M Street, the first two buildings that you see there, this is going to be difficult without a pointer. Are there two existing restored historic structures where leisure services are in today on M Street? Obviously, that has to remain. And then we show a new, actually, we show in this particular case, two of the buildings, two of the historic structures that are on L Street, being relocated to M Street, to complete that street with historic structures. It's a four-year wall apartment, and then the one-story, William told me both of them are actually, per the, per the estimates that were created recently for rehabbing, both of those are apparently in good enough shape to be rehabilitated. But to accommodate, you know, one of the, one of the ground rules we gave ourselves is that, to accommodate redevelopment, it doesn't make sense to try to relocate the existing beautifully restored historic structures that are on M Street. If you're going to relocate any buildings, relocate the ones that need a lot of work, they're already kind of wrapped. On the, on the west side, on L Street, what that represents is what we call a bungalow court. You see those four little roofs there, as you head south of the alley, towards the street, and then a walk-up apartment behind it, so you're pretty go four court with little bungalows, and then, and then the apartment behind, and then heading further south, those are typical three-story townhouse units with garages and garage apartments in the rear. So that is option A, and I'll give you a couple images, like, this is what that four court could look like. You see, you've got the little bungalows, maybe one, probably one or two, two bedrooms. They create this little space, you see this in Miami Beach, and then the, the Deco apartment two stories beyond. This is an aerial view, you see, this is looking down towards, from the northeast, looking down towards the corner of Lake and M. So you see, this is a combination of a three, a two-story building there anchoring the corner. As you head further south, you see the, the historic buildings that are relocated there, and then you see the townhouses beyond.
Wait a minute. We haven't looked at these yet, so we're really trying to.
Point out Lake and M.
Also by point, by. Go back to my planning days.
This is Lake, that runs diagonally here, yes, and that's M Street, perfect. And then that's the new corner building there that I was talking about. And going south then, those are the two relocated historic structures.
Well, where's the, where's 17 South M, which is.
Excuse me, that, that one's the existing.
That's, yeah.
That's.
That's one of, yes, I'm sorry, that's right.
But the one next to it is relocated.
Right.
That's the, that is the two-story apartment building.
And then beyond, you see townhouses facing L Street. Right, and then those, those are the garage apartments behind. And then the apartment building is right there, I'm sorry, I wish that we. Yes, yes, so those, that's an approach for how to, not unlike the Fairfax plan, to try to incrementally show redevelopment within those parcels. Like I said earlier, I think one of the things that came, the folks will disagree about, well, should it be three stories or up to four or five on Lake? Should it be two or three stories on L and M? And there's some debate about that, but I don't think there's much debate, that there's not a desire for a, like I said, a block-sized monolithic building. And I think that if, after all of this, there's a way to achieve some degree of incremental redevelopment, whether it's two stories or three stories, it takes up two lots or three lots, I think that's going to be, I believe, is going to be far more desirable to the community and a character with historic history. So this is what those townhouses might look like from the street, you can see townhouses there. Townhouse is here on the right-hand side, and then those little bungalows, that little bungalow court to the left there. All of this is intended to keep a relatively low-scale incremental infill and get densities up to where it hopefully makes financial sense. And get densities up to where it hopefully makes financial sense for someone to come in and build this. All right, L and M. We're oriented, Lake is at the top, L is to the left, M is to the right. Another version of that same building there on the corner. Um, you see the existing historic structures coming to the south along M. This one actually, yeah, the two little ones there. This one actually shows a three-story apartment building creating courtyard there between the two existing buildings, which I thought was pretty clever. You know, you want to create some of these interesting little spaces. And then on the L Street side, this shows two walk-up apartment buildings. Nope, up to the north, just there. Yes, thank you. There and down one there. And then this one actually illustrates the three historic structures remaining there. This is what the walk-up apartments could look, you know. Um, two stories, they could be three stories. And we showed two stories here, but. What's happening behind the scenes right now is that these different scenarios and options. Um, Tim Hernandez, the developer is running pro formas on to get an understanding of what construction costs are. What, is there enough density? Would the developer actually come in and build that? And we need to know. Um, so that you're not chasing something that's not feasible. We may find out that, well, at two stories, the density isn't quite there. Because keep in mind, there's a reason why builders build big buildings. It's one continuous footprint. You know, there's, there's efficiencies to that scale. To build a series of smaller incremental buildings that everybody loves, it's harder. You know, frankly, otherwise they'd be building and it's sometimes more costly. So these could be two or three stories is my point. Uh, but you get the idea that there, they are buildings within a lot and they're not a continuous street frontage. Uh, this is that view. This is actually a five-story building at Lake in M. Um, you'll notice it's notched out there to create a little plaza. I'm going to come back and talk about that a little bit later. This is what that might look like from the air. So similar to that other rendering that we saw, correct? That's that little plaza that's there. And then you see the new apartment building wrapping the existing structure there on M Street. And then you see those little apartment buildings up on L Street up there to the top.
Can you go back one?
Uh, yeah, that one. So this has um, three stories primarily facing, primarily facing the street, steps back at the fourth level. And then, and then again at the fifth level, but honestly, you could just step back at the fourth level and keep it going up because. Your, your, your vantage point from the street at that level, you're really only proceeding.
Yeah, see.
Right. And, and I, I, I think that's something, you know, it's a standard concept and I think. You even put it in our code at one point, that step stuff back and. You know, somebody looking at that, how does that read? Even from this angle, it, well, three and a half stories maybe. It doesn't read as five.
Right.
And from Blake itself, it certainly doesn't read as five.
And I may have just missed it and maybe it was because it's outside of the study area, but I did not hear any grousing at all about the one. Or the other building. Maybe there has been and I just missed it and I haven't been here for it.
No, I think there, there's some accuracy to that and I've wondered about that too. Part of it, I think, is it had some trees in front of it.
Well, and also the part of town it's in, when you go.
That's true.
While, instead of federal, you have a lot of height. When you're in downtown, it's all like, well, it's all like singles, mostly single-story.
Yeah.
I'm going to add something though. I'm going, I live, this is like my neighborhood. I've lived here thirty years. Um, is anyone aware of the fact that on M Street and Third Avenue South, there's a four-story nursing home?
Yep.
It's been there forever.
Yep.
That is not inclusive. That is um, been there. Nobody says, oh, there's this tiny building, you know, just a. Four, you know, if, if density is an issue, then I, I don't know that four would be for me a particular problem, depending on where it is and how it's cited.
Again, well, I just.
Well, you can.
I'm taking way too long, but um. A lot of the concepts that are in here are already in here. I mean, Williams, top-notch at getting this stuff together. Um, how it's applied though, I think that's something we'll come back to relative to the bonus program and absolute predictability within this small geog. Geographical area that is Old Town Historic District. There's something we can talk about, but you're right. There's height that people respond to. There's density that people don't really understand.
Right.
I, you can, I can't tell you if there's thirty units or fifteen units in that building. Do you know that there's only. The, the one building has fourteen units and the one going across the street, the Alora has twelve.
Right.
And I, we had lunch with the architect, with the Alora. Uh, he was a friend of one of the architects who was working with us. And I said, what would you do differently? He said, I would make the units half the size. And more, more affordable. And I said, well, why didn't you? He said, because we hit the maximum bits, because it's a small apartment. And that's when some, some bells went off and I'm going to come back to that in a little bit. So let me try to go quickly. This is again that aerial view. I know it's a lot to absorb, but um, I don't want to keep you here all night.
We're used to it.
Or pizza.
So here's just a night view of that same. Uh, this is option C again, similar. Um, the only difference here is that the historic structures are completely relocated off of this block.
Where?
Where?
Somewhere.
I mean, that's, that's a real, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We have, we only, by the way, in any of these relocated two or three at most. Um, and I'm going to come back to where they went because you saw that we've relocated a couple of them on the block in earlier scheme. This one, we relocated them to the CRA parcel over in K and First. Um, but this then has, you know, um, larger buildings. This is that three-story apartment. That's wrapping, creating that courtyard, which is currently leisure services. Right there.
Okay.
Yeah. And then this is a rendering, a, a beautiful rendering that Shalender did of what that building might look like. And keep this in mind, this forecourt here. We call that civic open space. You've got some of those requirements already. One of our recommendation, I think, going forward is that it became, it become. It become sort of an air-clad requirement within the downtown district. So, K Street options. Now, what you'll see to the left is the existing municipal parking lot. That's K Street. Where all of these big trees are, that's the CRA parcel. Um, and we're showing these because there's an interrelationship between these. Okay, we heard actually, you know, we heard a lot of interesting things about what should happen on the CRA parcel on Saturday. Um, a new swimming pool, City Hall should go there, obviously some big enough. Um, but we also heard, which you know, really. My team, you know, chimed in on, or they, they, they responded well to is, it should be a beer garden. And what if you were to relocate some of the historic structures there? And create some form of open public space. That, you know, it's not a brewery, but it's a place where you can go and maybe it has a playground and you can get a bite to eat. And you can sit outside and, you know, drink beer or whatever. Um, but we thought that was interestingly, interesting idea, especially um, as a receiving site for some of the historic structures.
Are you talking about the, with the one with all the trees, which is now empty lot, would they demolish that?
That's correct. It's at the, it's at the northeast corner of K and First Avenue South. Now, what this shows, um, you'll see there at the bottom of the parking lot. Um, one idea that came up, the, the yellow, if you don't mind, whichever, there you go, thank you. Yes. One idea that came up is that those would be two, two-story tall, but with a mezzanine, um, artist's lofts. With a rear yard for smelting and welding and kilns and all of that kind of stuff. Just as, as an interesting concept. It backs up to the parking lot. Right. You know, you don't want to put that in the middle of the neighborhood necessarily, but it could be very, very interesting. Um. Because we heard a lot about the, you know, the, this is truly an arts community.
Well, well, son.
Yeah, I mean.
Costs money.
Right, exactly.
You know, I mean, space is space. Um, so anyway, that was the concept there. Um, and you see that. And this was, this is just a, an idea of what that might look like, sort of two, two, two-story volume space. And this is an aerial who, looking towards the east, this is First Avenue South. Here, and that's what, you know, exactly. And that's what to the left. Is what the, uh, well, that's a little beer garden there, right? And then to the left, a little bit further down.
Down.
There you go. That's the sort of artist loft, working space, a true working space. Uh, that's a little rendering of the beer garden, you know, with the historic structures there, create a little outdoor space. We just thought it was interesting and, you know, one of the great things about. Lake Worth, like you see in great cities like Key West or whatever. Often times you turn the corner and there's a surprise, something you didn't expect. And that's really, really something that we want to maintain. These are some of the options. Another option is to um, actually do townhouses. By the way, in this scenario, in these scenarios, those three contributing structures, quote unquote, um, are gone. One could be relocated, but two of them, I understand, are in bad enough shape that they may not, they may be cost prohibitive to be. To be uh, rehabilitated. There's got to be given tape. Moving one of those historic structures alone could exceed a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, obviously the distance depends and whether or not there's power lines and there's a lot of things, you know, involved in that. Um, and it might be cheaper. But, you know, we're trying to balance the preservation of those. Um, as well as creating sites that can be developed, um, consistent with what the current rules. So again, here are some of those, those townhouse options on the left. Those are the four structures that exist. And then the townhouses could be parked underneath the middle one. The, the, no, I'm sorry, the middle, the middle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that shows the ground floor of the townhouse and those little triangles are the, are the cars parked in the garage from the rear. And then that's just the roof plan beyond. That's a duplicate. And we also did a version using one of the WGI parking garage designs. Because as I, as I stated on Saturday, you know, my, my personal and professional feeling is that. You know, building a garage should be the last option because it's the most expensive. You should explore everything else first, like metering, on-street parking on Lake and Lucerne. You know, you should explore all options to keep cars moving. Um, but if you do find, especially through redevelopment. Because some of those scenarios, you know, we, we, we took some of the surface parking. And that's critical. It's got to be, it's got to be found somewhere else. Um, so, you know, we wanted to show that there's a way to actually line that garage. One of the WGI designs with the townhouses, so that the neighbors to the south. Aren't looking at the back of a garage. Nobody wants to do that. And that's just what those townhouses might look like from the street, screening that big box. It's the garage beyond. And you see the townhouses way back there, up at the top. There you go, to the right, there you go. So, you know, it's a scale that I think is consistent with, with what's in the, in the area.
It would mean that the, the townhouses, uh, I guess the artist area that you were thinking of, that's the same area, right?
Yeah, it's an option.
It's right.
It's an option. Um, that, they would generously provide visual protection of the parking garage for the people's house, but their back view would be rather. Parking garage-ish.
Are they parking in the parking garage? Do they have a?
Would they?
The townhouses, do they have their own?
They have their own stairs underneath, yes.
That they access through the parking garage?
They, they would access through an alley, a space between. So if you've ever, I'm sure you've been to City Place or Rosemary Square, whatever they call it now. Um, the parking garages that are there. Particularly where Macy's used to be. Those are townhouses. You don't know the garages are there until you actually go to use them. And they're townhouses that are screening the garages. In fact, in my neighborhood, just south of the convention center, there's a whole row, we call the townhouse buffer. Because when the county came in to build the convention center, there's a big garage there. It's like six stories.
Right.
And they screened the garage and it's just kind of understood. Um, and people typically, unless you've got a single-family house, you know, and you've got a beautiful garden, people will typically respond more to what's. In front of them often than what's behind. That's why alleys are good at behind, you know, and in utilities and garbage, big stuff. All right, we're almost there. So we've done a series of scenario takeoffs, okay? With each one of these scenarios. Uh, we've created a plate like this. It talks about the square footages, talks about the densities. Talks about um, the number of units, et cetera. And we've done that for each of the different scenarios. I'm not going to walk you through all these, but these are what we're providing to the developers, Tim Hernandez. Um, to say, what does this look like financially? He told us, he believes that there is a market for building these missing middle type of walk-up apartments. Townhouses you could build all day long, you're just not going to achieve the same densities. You know, and they're more likely going to be a lot more expensive. Uh, so trying to find the building on Lake Avenue, the five-story one that we're talking about, you know. Uh, you know, that might be the most expensive units of the lot. Um, depending upon how it would be structured. But anyhow, he is now, um, he's now working on the financials for this. And I hope to have, and I don't know when this would be, we maybe schedule another special meeting or something. But I would love to have him after, after we get that information and can go through it with, with your staff and with the CRA staff. Love to have him come back and present that information to you, so I don't do a bad impression. Impersonation. Uh, make a bad impression, making a bad impersonation, right? Um, so finally, we're almost there. These are some initial recommendations that aren't drawn. And I want to take just a moment to go through this. We believe that you should consider developing or revising the bonus structure that exists today. Specific for the Old Town Historic District. That it has its own set of additional height and density rules. We heard a lot, and don't, this isn't a criticism, but we heard a lot about. We don't, we're concerned about the predictability of what's going to happen in downtown. You know, what, what happens on, you know. Rules, the rules that exist apply seemingly well at Dixie or in other places within the city. But in the heart of downtown, we need to, we need to fine tune those a little bit and we heard that. Um, and what our initial recommendation is going to be that you limit. The bonuses for any additional height. Notice I'm just saying height. In the, in the downtown for onsite tangible elements. Remember the rendering that I was showing? I said, remember that notch out there? I know that there's already civic open space provision in some of the bonuses, but make it dreadfully clear what you're talking about. You know, and that you are going to provide this type of space and that it is very clear in the code. Affordability might be one of those too. And whatever it is, I just think it should be, if you're going to continue to offer bonuses in the Old Town Historic District. It needs to be incredibly clear what the exchange was.
Right.
And we heard that on Saturday, you know. I supported that five-story building because now we have this plaza here on the street. Um, and I think that's really important and that might not be a huge, you know, change to make.
What about the affordability part? Because I can hear Tim Hernandez doing his impersonation of you like, well, thanks a lot, but. My numbers just went out the window.
Talk to the microphone, people can't hear.
Um, the civic open space obviously sacrifices units and, and height and density. Well, you can't put something in the civic open space in terms of the pro forma. The affordability, I'm guessing, might be an even bigger hit to the developer. Uh, does, does it seem at all feasible? Is Tim going to look at that and their numbers?
Um, I will talk to him about that. At this first pass, I don't think so.
And.
I think that's something, that's, that's the type of program that you guys would work out with the city. Granted, smaller units are naturally more affordable. However, smaller units don't necessarily make affordable units for a family of three or four.
Right.
So those are things that you're going to have to grab with this for the city. I just put that. Personally, I think the civic open space is obvious and clear. The affordability part is, is less. Um, now, this, this one, um, I'll be interested to see your reaction here. We're recommending that in the Old Town, you actually remove any of those maximum density numbers. Let the, let the mass and the scale of the building determine how many units go in. Because like the guy building the Alora.
Right.
Would have liked to put many more units, but smaller and more affordable.
Same footprint, same volume.
The box doesn't change.
Yeah.
Right.
It's whether you've got twelve units or twenty-four.
And I think one of the things that we're looking at in terms, one of the things that we're looking at in terms of, you know, people who live downtown. You know, it's not necessarily a family with three kids. I know that when. The people were still living in the buildings that the CRA, the city bought, those were. Waiters and people that worked downtown. So I think in terms of the affordability, I mean, just, I love it. I mean, I live in a tiny, in a pretty small house. And um, right downtown, so I can walk downtown. So with the Gulf Stream. Perhaps happening. Um. There's going to be a lot of people working at the Gulf Stream. And there's going to be a workforce. And there's other, you know, the big buildings that are the, I, I just think that we should definitely look at the increased density. I have no problem with density downtown. I mean, I used to live in a tenement in New York City and it was just small. But you don't need a lot.
It pushes people out on the street.
It absolutely does.
So again, these are, these, I'm, I'm stepping into William and Aaron's territory here very cautiously, but. I, these recommendations are really not to be citywide or anything, but tested specifically within that Old Town. Because of the predicament that you have today.
Let me ask you a question. Will you? Let me ask you a question. Will you, you know, you talked about Anne's, you know, plan, which was lovely. Was that, were elements of that sort of integrated? I mean, I don't see that as one of the options.
You don't see what is one of the?
Anne's.
Anne's plan.
Yeah.
We chose not to reproduce Anne's plan. A lot of elements of Anne's plan are.
Are in there.
For instance, the building facing lake. Anne's plan kept that footprint exactly as it is. And that's, that was, that's brilliant. The townhouse as a building typology is great. I think she also had it in apartment building as well. We tried to keep as much of the surface parking available that's there.
Right.
We weren't completely successful in that. There's going to have to be, as you fill out these sites, you know, there's going to have to be apartment. And so that's, that's another dilemma to figure out. And there's a reason why big buildings have big garages, you know? But, you know, that knocks some of the affordability out of it sometimes, too.
Right. I, and I know that there are people that really don't support a parking garage because we want a walkable downtown, but my experience in places where I've had a walkable, the Burlington, Vermont, for example, and they closed Church Street. It's beautiful. It's wonderful. But there's a four-story parking garage next to it. I mean, people aren't going to walk from someplace to come to downtown. They've got to have a place to put their car. So philosophically, I am not opposed to the concept of the parking. I also like the idea of the shared parking, you know, the church.
Right. And parking garages by themselves do not eliminate walkability.
Right.
Blowing out blocks with surface parking lots, that hurts a lot.
Exactly. You can.
So you want to infill that as much as possible with a scale and character that you like. And then to the extent possible, have some off-site parking.
Well, Anne, I know that Anne Fairfax and I both a few years ago did a walk, independently did a walking tour of the, of the empty parking lots in the churches downtown. And I think we came up with about eight hundred parking spaces.
Sure, sure.
Between the Presbyterian Church, Church of the Blades, Sacred Heart is, it's, I think it was something we should.
Yeah, I, I really liked that, you know, that was brought up, finding other opportunities because I think, you know, Dana hit the nail on the head about parking garage should be the last obstacle, the last choice.
I don't necessarily agree with that.
They are.
They're expensive, but there's other ways that we can increase, you know, parking inventory, you know, creatively.
And I think one of the things that we talk about, say, for example, the church parking lots, just as an example, I think signage is really key to this because, you know, how, how, let's say we take Church of the Blades and we work out a deal with them, and that's a lot of parking spaces. Well, how to, you know, if there's, if I'm going to go to a town and I think, oh God, parking is going to be an issue, but I go there and there's a sign that says public parking two blocks, and I know where it's going to be. I will still go there. If that doesn't exist, and I'm not a great walker right now. So just knowing that there is parking available would be helpful to people coming in.
And you got to know your town too. Like, I don't know the Lake, I, I, I simply don't know. I don't know that Lake Worth Beach, your downtown, is a ballet type of environment. Delray Beach, on the other hand, they ballet all night long. And ballets will put cars in places that you typically wouldn't, you know, they'll park a block or so away with, with the right arrangements, you know? But, you know, ballet, I'm personally, I'm a strong fan of metering parking on your most valuable streets. Because you'd be surprised how many shop owners and, and folks working at the shops.
Parking for the store.
Part of their stores.
For eight hours.
Yeah. Anyhow, let me move on. And this didn't come up at the Charette. This came up through the extensive number of interviews that I had. And it, it didn't come up specifically like, hey Dana, we need a Main Street Association, or we need a downtown development authority. It came up quite frankly, because I kept hearing over and over, well, the CRA should be doing this, the CRA should, now I kept saying, not to defend the CRA, but CRA has a specific mission. You know what I mean? This is the type of stuff that a downtown Main Street Association might be doing, or a DDA. But in addition to that, I didn't get the sense that there's any formal representation of the business owners downtown.
Carolyn?
And I think.
One of our downtown business people that we have said for years, we need some sort of good downtown business.
Because I'm worried that you'll make decisions about parking that the business owners might regret.
Well, they should certainly have a voice in this.
Absolutely, absolutely. And they're like, what? You know, they're your Main Street, whether they live here or not, you know, it's important. So anyway, I threw that in there. And then finally, I think there's one more. Okay. To City Hall.
Let me talk about that.
Please.
Okay. Okay. I've been thinking about that. I've mentioned a couple of times, and I think you actually mentioned it recently. We have an opportunity, and I'm going to put it out there. We have an opportunity to make our, we, we own the property, which is currently the fire and the police. There's enough room there, I'm told, to do a city hall. If we did a city hall there, we use this building for community meetings, community centers, and then we have the CRA, the Hatch Building. We have then a government center, which we don't have now. And one of the things that, you know, having been here now for a year, I realize it's, if Carmen wants to talk to, to William, it's two and a half mile, two miles away. So relationships are important. And there's something about running into each other in the hallway and saying, hey, what about this? That you don't get when you're all over the place. So I, one of the things I want to, after we get rid of the pool and the L and M project and the Gulf Stream, I'm hot, and the staff notices I'm hot on a city hall, a new city hall.
I spoke to Commissioner Stokes about this at Lang one day. You probably can't afford it today, but you need to plan for it.
We will find the money.
Find the money. May I? May I respectfully offer another site?
Sure.
And this is where Joan and the CRA stop loving me. I think, that's a great site. You talked about having that useful campus. The Hatch 21 site, though, is actually really well positioned. It's right there across the street from what will be the train station. It also has a civic presence. It has a civic presence between Lake and Lucerne. And it also, what, what, what we talked about during the week, it's a link between east and west.
Yeah. The Hatch, Young Songs Design Firm did a study of putting a new city hall on the Hatch site. I believe it's completed in two thousand three, that's in the archives of our plans that we keep creating. So there's actually a study that it has a great deal more square footage and programming than we actually do today.
Okay. I, I kind of like that they have the CRA staying where they are, just because that three then would, would create it, but as soon as we find the money.
Again, just real quickly, this is what we were talking about in terms of civic open space. And, and yeah, you're taking away buildable area, but you're not taking away density, not taking away units, because we don't have any units for it. So finally, and this is the last slide, we hope to get a little bit of direction this evening. I know it's a lot to take in. We're going to go back to our offices and continue to refine this, especially with regard to the financials. And then I think once we can tell you this scenario might be achievable, or might be marketable, this one is not. You know, we might, as a collective team, start to refine that and then make some decisions about how to move forward with regard to an RFP or multiple RFPs, et cetera. And then hopefully, and we'll, we'll stay in touch with your staff and thank you for having us. It was a great week. Thanks to all these folks. You did a beautiful job.
Yeah, thank you very much, really. I mean, sure, to have a Charette, to have that space open for that many days, I think was really a great achievement. Your part in the CRA's part to give you that space, because it wasn't just a one-day thing people could wander in. So personally, we've just been shown a lot. You have a lot to sort of look at. And so I don't know what level of commitment or what level of decision you're looking for tonight, but I would almost like the opportunity to like really sit down and look at these before I say, I think, from my perspective, and I'm just going to go, well, each one of us, I mean, it's kind of, I mean, it's, thank you. I mean, it's, it's small scale. If it works financially, I personally, again, I live a half a block from a four-story building and I didn't even notice it at all, because you don't see it. But I would, and I'm all about elevators, so if you go four stories, three, you're in an elevator. But I think it's exciting. I think it's, you know, to the scale that we are talking about, you know, no one's coming in, putting in a box. If it's financially feasible, I think that out of these four, something will come. Chris?
First of all, several thank yous. I'd like to thank the CRA full staff and the board for having been willing to step back from the previous RFP and say, hey, maybe we're not quite there yet on figuring out what the community is comfortable with, which opened up the possibility of doing this. And I'd like to thank ourselves, because I think, I think we improved jointly, I can't remember if we're jointly funding with CRA or CRA is funding it, but we were on board. And to me, being at the Saturday, hearing, seeing the process, I'm kind of a architecture fan and herbal plant, and so I like it, but
But not an expert.
Really like is this was such a very open way of pulling in a lot of input from the community. And I was struck, and I think you referred to it a lot, and I think all of us were struck, how consistent many of the points off of different groups coming from different people. So that it, it gives a sense that if we can make this, pick up some of these ideas, make the financial part work, which, maybe yes, maybe no, that will have a lot of support in the community for this. And I, I'm thrilled with that. A couple of specifics, I like a lot, your lunch with the architects, the one and whatever the others called, the idea that, wow, you know, you've got a requirement there on density that actually is maybe counterproductive on a number of ways. That we're all very eager for affordability. We're all concerned in the community that seven hundred thousand dollar units is not quite what we had in mind exactly. But our own rules kind of pushed it into that, you know, unintended consequences or something. I love the idea of the visual setbacks, certainly the civic spaces, especially if, and I don't know how you do that, but that's maybe down into the details of, can these be places where conversations happen, where public discussions happen, where it's part of that making the public life? And the idea that you refer to, if you make them smaller, you push people outside, you increase the interaction in the community, which is a good thing. It's something that we all support. So I'm excited. I have a lot of good things. Now, the one thing you didn't have on your list, nobody liked palm trees. I said shade trees. You did say shade, but you didn't not like palm trees. It was pretty consistent. I'm trying, but it's okay. We like not palm trees.
We like not palm.
It's too bad we're not in Florida where they grow. I mean, there's a way to do palm trees. And there's, I mean, there's different ways to do palm trees. A palm tree is not a great shade bearer, but.
No, but I mean, you know, palm trees can be very effective in some way, real palm way. Just real quickly, though, the, the density thing I failed to mention, that's not necessarily a super quick fix, because that's locked into your comp plan, if I'm not mistaken.
It's actually required under the management regulations of the state.
What does that mean?
That means we have to have some sort of baseline density parameter in our comp plan, but I already have an idea how to fix that. And I can give you the eighty units an acre downtown. And you would not be able to fit them all in there.
Okay, cool.
I'll tell you, in, in Delray Beach, they're downtown, their comp plan has a ceiling of one hundred units per acre. They limit it to fifty because they find the village just, and they have a four-story height limit. Forget it. You don't go any taller than that. The village just, they can't, you just can't fit it that much, you know? So thank you for those.
Commissioner Linga. No, I do that all the time. And I'm going to put Stokes right here so that I can remind myself. I don't know why I do. I apologize. I truly apologize. Commissioner Stokes.
Yeah, just a few things. I, I think it's really critical for us to incorporate something like in your garden, as we saw with COVID and the pandemic, shutting things down, the desire for everybody to move outdoors, we didn't have enough outdoor space. And now that people are used to being outdoor, they don't want to go back indoors.
Yeah.
And I think that will really be something that draws people to our city. And then once they're there, they'll, they'll wander in and out of the other shops. So I think that is really a great idea. Excited to see that incorporated in the plans. I am nervous about the five-story. When I look at that rendering, I look at renderings all the time. I'm like, that, you know, I could go for that. And then when you actually see it in real life, in the, like, with the real surroundings, it's sometimes it, it shocks you in a way that you weren't expecting. So I, I want to be careful. I appreciate this step back, so. Love micro units. And, oh, I really love the walk-up apartments with the courtyard. And I, I love, one of our residents mentioned, oh God, I can't remember what they're called anymore. But like, they almost feel like little communities of themselves when you create that kind of courtyard. Yeah, like, there was something.
Pocket neighborhoods, there you go.
Yeah, I just think it's, we, that's what we love about our city is that sense of community and to have, to be able to have something like that so close to downtown to make people want to go out and mingle. And it just feels so friendly. So I loved that. And I imagine you might, like you said, take bits and pieces of the four different options and, and then obviously, yes, the artist workspace. I thought that was brilliant. So so many good things there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I remember your name. Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of agreement. It is a lot to take in at once and definitely want to go through and, you know, look at all the details and nuances. Certainly, some things that really stand out. One thing I think you didn't mention, but I think is really evident in the drawings, is lot coverage and, you know, having that not curve to curve development, you know, no monolith, as you call it. And I think that that in conjunction with higher density, really appreciate bringing up a, a look at how we do those bonuses and whatnot, because that's something that's on my radar for sure. How can we improve that? And, you know, a lot of maybe out in the public, a lot of people maybe don't fully understand or don't appreciate that you can get density without, you know, massive aggregation. And I think that's a difficult concept to portray. I think these, the options that we've seen, I think, really take that into consideration really well. You know, tiny apartments, smaller living, think to be environmentally friendly and affordable, that really is the future. It's, you know, less than our impact. One thing, I know you, you mentioned it and called it a faux pas, but I did want to mention the closing early on that Wednesday. It's, you know, maybe more, it's more of an in general, like citywide thing, because I take it kind of, not necessarily personally, but I do see the effect, especially meetings that we take the time to post a notice to encourage public participation, especially once we get to the hours of five PM and after, because, you know, the participation from the community at those hours, those are the people who generally aren't going to be working during the day and don't have any other time to participate.
But they were there till ten o'clock at night.
For most days, yeah. But, you know, people work at night as well. And so when we, when we post hours, I think we should be careful about honoring them, just, you know, as a practice.
And I completely agree. I reached out to the individual and apologized, and it was just a great set of circumstances. And hopefully, we're going to get together. Thank you for your comments.
Before we move on, though.
Sure. William, can you speak into my?
My board was named to have more than likely a portal update second series, meaning the latter part of July. So that there will be a little bit of time if there are any budget ramifications of things that could be incorporated. And what, and I spoke briefly, a lot of the ideas of how we get some insurance is that came out of the workshop, and so that I'm working out a way that we can do it with just LVR changes and don't have to do a whole conflict change. And so I've almost finished with all of that, and that may be done within three months.
I love it.
And you have coming forward, so that you will, because we had a workshop recently, the micro unit of work is coming, planning for reservation board next month. It will come to you in July. The Leyland Horse Beach Affordable Housing Program is following the same track, which requires at least fifteen percent of any number of additional units to be in the affordable range. That also spells out how you can get another fifteen percent additional on density, which all have to be affordable. And then the design qualitative standards and building performance standards, which incorporate climate change, CO2 rise, and sustainability are also coming. It's three separate organizations. So they do have financial implications on the city and the stat and standpoint, but a lot of the things that we were already working on before the Charette, and those organizations were already advertised, and you will see them in the month of now.
Can I ask you a favor?
Sure.
We've talked about it at our agenda meeting about just rent, you know, with a rental license, you have to have, I would like to see that happen as quickly as we possibly can. Which was that, if you have a rental license, you have to have someone who will be on site within twenty-four hours.
That, I could have sworn, maybe it was my mistake. We had a provision of that, Commissioner Over, Commissioner Maxwell bought it up. And I cannot find any organs I'm still looking for. We had that requirement, which was voices. It actually is a city policy. If we can't find it, I'm.
It has to be an ordinance, stamp enforcement.
Right, so we're going to be bringing forward that if I can't find it to you very shortly.
Okay, I'd like if we could do it before July first, that would be helpful.
Well, if we, this it is an ordinance change, we have to give about.
Two readings. Two hearings.
We can, doesn't have to be organized, but we might be able to meet it. But I'm already having the business license. For your little notice, it's rewritten, thirty reflect, you must provide
Sixteen.
A low total.
Oh, okay.
Contact email, phone number, and the person has to be within fifty miles of the city. Or a Palm Beach, or within Palm Beach County, which I can't remember how we had it set up before.
But I think it needs to be, I think we have a lot of, you know, a lot of tenants here, a lot of landlords here, and you know, if something bad happens in your apartment, you want to be able to say, get somebody here to fix it within, I mean, twenty four, I mean, really four hours, you know, if it's a bad, if water's coming through your ceiling. But at least a person on site within, at least, to me, the minimum would be twenty four hours.
I'll look at the schedule, that'll be fine, because you've got some living meetings. I know we can get a first reading of it in June, the second meeting will probably be in July, the third will be in July.
I would like to, you know, that for for sure, I think that's, you know, that could be part of a a list, not not necessarily a large list, but a so-called tenant bill of rights, you know, that are coming up in many, many communities across the country. Having someone available to take care of issues like that. Other things, you know, providing certain livable conditions that the state, the tenant bill of rights don't necessarily provide that we can do as a city to better protect renters, I would love to hear, you know, both yours perspective honestly on things that we can add to help address some of those problems.
And that might be a conversation, a bigger conversation than tonight, but I think we're on the same track.
Yeah.
Well, this is very exciting to actually sit and be talking about things that, you know, we've been concerned about for a number of years, and thank you very much.
I have a question, Mayor, because I had people reach out to me today, and this was a special meeting and not a workshop. So are we taking public comment?
I don't think we are, it's really just a presentation. And we have, I think we have something from the real Commissioner Malaga. That the manager is going to read, did you want to do that?
No, that's the next item.
Oh, then, oh, okay, great.
Next item.
Okay, so, yeah, I public comment, I mean, we had not planned on taking public comment because it really is just a presentation.
Well, I don't, I did reach out to Carmen this morning to ask because it was called a special meeting, and I I don't remember. Glenn's here.
He's listening.
Because I know we have certain rules for workshops, isn't it?
I certainly share the concern that that we have not, we've been very squishy and it's come up a number of times that we have meetings and clearly people would like to put input and I think we need to do a little bit more to accommodate.
More than a four day charrette that's open till ten o'clock at night?
Well, I mean.
Well, the reality is that people connect in at different points on it and the, you know, this is a time where the the results that came out of it kind of are summarized, it's a logical time somebody might want to comment and say, hey, I'm all for that, or I disagree, or whatever.
I think it's two minutes on an agenda item, so if we gave, if anybody in the room wanted to.
I'm not opposed to it, I just.
We can hear that, so what we just saw is we're kneeling over everything we just heard.
I have no problem, it's only seven seventeen, we've got all night. Do you want to, do you want to do the other item first? We wanted to do this, all right, do one, all right, so, and now are you taking off, back up to Stuart or are you going to sit for a while?
No, I'm just staying.
And with public comments, we don't engage and ask questions, it's not a dialogue, it's two minutes, public comments, tell us what
Madam Clerk, thank you, listen, thank you so much, this is a very exciting time to to be doing this. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Can you set the timer for people for two minutes?
The city manager has it down there.
Our city manager has it all taken care of, you're going to time it? Okay, and she's got a timer too, so.
I gotta remember.
So that's fine, I I have no problem with that, so if we have Madam Clerk, have any, have you received any public comment, cards that people want to make a public comment on?
We have not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we have some folks in this, in the audience that may have filled out a blue card. And let's just, no one's brought any up yet, let's just bring them up.
There's some right there in the box.
There's some right there in the box, are they filling? They're blank, just give it to me, Karen. We could do this passing down, I don't really know why. First up, name and address.
Hi, my name is Kara Jennings, East Street. I think the presentation did a really good job of reflecting what we heard from the public, I mean, in terms of what kind of design we're looking for. I wanted to really stress the part about affordable housing. I was looking over the study done by FIU, you all have probably seen it, it's from twenty twenty one, it's a Palm Beach County Affordable Housing Needs Assessment. And for Lake Worth, they show that sixty five percent of our housing stock is rentals. And of that sixty five percent, so of that majority, seventy percent of those people are considered we have a technical word, but basically they can barely afford their rent. And that was twenty twenty one. So we know it's gotten way extremely worse, you know, on my way here, I passed the house on Southeast Street and Third South, two bedroom house for rent for twenty six hundred dollars. Fabulous two bedroom house, so we're really in a crisis and we have this incredible opportunity to lead as a city and show what redevelopment can look like with affordable housing at the front. Not, you know, not ten percent, fifteen percent, like, how how big can we go and make it truly affordable? And really use our our strength as a public entity to lead on this issue, so I would just love to see this project shine in that way. Those two little two three houses over there, great, if you can bump it up to three stories and and make it affordable, I think there's a lot of support. The five story building, that's really, it's all in context, how those buildings look, how do they look on the side that's not stepped back? It's a question, and I really would encourage you to speak in feet, not stories. People say five stories, they have an assumption, how many feet that is. But let's get, when people come before you with projects, just please articulate the number of feet it is, we do have a real savvy community here who is very serious about building height. Although I agree with the mayor, and it's not appropriately, the the height isn't a deal breaker to me personally, I think affordable housing is the most critical issue, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Anne Fairfax. Who do you think?
Evening, Anne Fairfax, two two six South L. Fantastic to be here and to have been part of the full excitement and participation of the city, it was a great idea, and I'm I'm very happy to to be part of it, and I just want to just take one little aspect of element in the world for me is parking and parking minimums. And when we talk about density, we talk about affordable housing, micro units and providing all of that, you really have to tackle and not turn your back on size. If you require one and a half or two parking spaces for a micro unit, that is a micro unit right there. And that's, so it's, it's the cost of the parking and the land use and the ill use of land that really drives up the the problem, it it, you don't have the mobility, there's, it it's such a non-honorable fact, nobody wins. I know that it's, you know, as Victor Dover always said, you mentioned parking on public space, it's like mentioning fire, you know, everybody has but I do think that we need a Mobility Commission, we need to have a separate you know, board that meets and tackles these parking issues and land use, mobility issues and bring them forward so that we can have a really progressive we can embrace the progressive ideas and do the research and really drill down into instead of taking potshots and, oh, I'm for a parking garage, I'm not for a parking garage, we we need the real data. And I I do think that if we have a commission that can you know, address it in a meaningful way, we'll we'll get some consensus.
Thank you. Bob and Shaw.
It makes noise, I try not to interrupt, but it's the speaker.
Hi, thanks for the time, I just had a few points, number one.
Did you say your name and where you are from?
Sorry, Bob and Shaw, I'm, I guess, a developer at Lake Worth and developing several different projects. I just wanted to make a few points, number one, just for the record, there were others who I believe wanted to make comments to this proposal today, but it was unfortunate that we thought that there was no common public contact solicited. So I hope there's a secondary opportunity for people to actually comment the right comment, because it's unfair to those who didn't take.
They should email and copy all of us.
Yeah, that'd be great. Number two, I think a point that you made earlier was regarding the DDA or downtown authority of merchants. We are actually, for the purposes, room and brothers, actually working on an organization where we can put that together with a lot of local merchants and developers in the lake in a certain area. So hopefully, we'll be looking for the support of the commission and how we can all work together to do that. Number three, I think the parking piece is an incredibly important piece for us all to talk about. And I think it can be done tastefully, and I think it can be addressed with respect to the things that 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 a lot of us are facing. The constant not complaint, but the constant suggestions we hear is where can we park, there's not enough space for parking. And I would love for us to potentially, even if it's a task force or something, to look into that, which I'd be happy to participate on. I think there's a lot of incentives available for us to think about smart parking, there's a lot of incentives available where things like this can be done without a cost to the city, so I'd love to explore that, if that's something that's on your agenda. And then last thing I would ask is, we talked about the the boundary of the historical district, which is is important, I agree with the fact that we should be providing affordability and accommodating our density to do that. But I also want to bring the tension that the lines that we draw for the historic district, I mean, simply if you look just across the street from where those lines are drawn, it's totally different kinds of development. So if we're going to look, for example.
Thank you. And again, anybody that wants to, you know, have input into the into the commission, just email all of us and we'll be glad to hear it. Greg Richter.
Thank you very much, Greg Richter, hello to South Palm Way. Anyway, I just want to comment, you mentioned the part about the trees and palm trees and shade trees, and I've actually talked to the head of the tree board about this. I I get the idea that reducing the carpet footprint, the shade, you know, with 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 shady trees. But the problem we have is that we have sewer system, storm sewer system that is gravity fed, and I'm fighting constantly, I have fourteen oak trees across the street from me. And I'm constantly cleaning the sewer out myself to keep that from clogging up. And I actually talked to the tree tree board about it, and they kind of, they kind of looked at me like, you know, you're right. And, you know, because one of the, if you want to look at a beautiful example of a of a shade canopy, please go to South Seventeenth Street and and South Palm Park, it's beautiful. But it's also one of the worst flooded streets that we have here in Lake Worth, Seventeenth and Eighteenth really flood there. So I I just, you know, it's cause and effect, I just think we need to look at, you know, what the ramifications are if we go this direction. Just another quick note on your city hall funding, I saw we're avoiding the CRA, okay.
I'm in touch with the mayor, I'm in touch with the mayor.
Thank you all very much, and the charrette was a blast, really enjoyed it, kept my mouth shut more and more.
My goodness. Would you talk to Commissioner Meb, I don't know. We, I kid him. You know I do.
I'm good.
And people say I'm mean, but I'm not.
You chew on me. It's good to see everybody tonight, and I just think it's going to be a real bummer, we have to go to the churches to get them to donate their parking for us.
Nobody said donate.
Okay, well, I I think that it's going to be a bummer that we go into a an event style parking situation. You know, we're not a town of events down there, really, we do have some events. But for people to have to walk, you know, even two and three blocks in this heat and the sun, you know, it's going to be a bummer, a lot of people come downtown to drink, you know, it's going to be a long walk back to your car, you can have a drink, it dries you up.
I'm so sorry.
I'm just walking through my brother.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so, so I think that the parking situation really is a bummer. I mean, I did come up with an idea and I did talk to Mr. Wad, and it turns out that can't work with, you know, one story parking garage that would encompass the big footprint that we do have in our parking area behind this worth there. But it turns out it wouldn't work, because we cost too much money. And the guy that owns the space next to the parking, next to the the gas station, not going to sell any property for any kind of piece of money. But I just think that we are coming up on a big bummer to where we are going to have, we take parking's parking tower behind the theater, and I think at that point it's going to be a real bummer.
Thank you. Tom Conboy.
Good afternoon, evening. What, it's zero o'clock? We've stopped the clock.
That means I could talk forever.
Actually, that's not what it means.
I wanted to thank the community and President of Regional Planning Council and Dana for really doing an awesome job of working together that Saturday. I saw a lot of people that don't necessarily agree talking, I saw them collaborating and communicating, and I thought that was really, really awesome. One thing I would like to do is further develop the idea of the small business incubator program, because I think it didn't really get hit home hard enough. I really could see the idea, you know, you mentioned some small businesses, mostly, I think, developers and richers. We here in Lake Worth, we need to bring in, I've got an engineer coming. We need to bring in the lawyers, we need to bring in the surveyors, we need to bring in the dentists and doctors. The painters, the auto repair folks. The, you know, we need a working class actual place where people come to work here, not just be a place where people come from there and then go and work somewhere else. So if we can really build and strengthen our business titles, we're going to have a stronger community. All of those jobs will bring money into the community, which will help fund the city call. So that's my point that I'd like to make, and just really want to say, awesome job in facilitating. And I was very impressed.
Thank you, yeah, it it is very, the whole thing is exciting because a lot of us were very compelled to join the wonderful world of politics because of this project. So, and no other comments, okay, great, and I do thank the CRA for, you know, giving the time and also it was a difficult moment, a couple, you know, a year, year and a half ago with the CRA and the the vision that we, they were gracious enough to say, okay, we'll take another look at it, and I very much appreciate that, and I worked pretty hard on being annoying to get that done, but I appreciate that you did that. So having no more public comments, we're going to move on to item B. Thank you all for coming. Have a great evening. You want to take a ten minute break for bathroom? Five minute break for bathrooms? Let's take a five minute break for the bathroom, bathroom break. Yeah, yeah, it was, it was really warm before, but.
Thank you very much, Greg Richter. Well, go to South Palmway.
And we have a presentation by staff.
We definitely have a home presentation, but I would like to call up, um, the math that's training and using some new, uh, uh, student, we get a little, uh, and go to and we might ask if our data way. But, um, there are properties that were purchased with city funds and they're property that were transferred to the CRA. And there are properties that were purchased on the CRA, the loan fund. Um, seven two south and where the preparation, um, group is, that was purchased with city funding. Um, and they transferred to the CRA. If you move over common to the north of the block, you know, the next block or where your next, oh, next block, next to the parking lot.
Oh, okay. Yes, yeah, the miles of work for now.
So. This property here was purchased with CRA money.
Is that 24 south? Let's, let's say the address is. I think that's 24.
Uh, the 26 south. Okay, playing right now. The water block, so I'm, I'm just purchasing, um, city funds.
And that's 28, 26.
26.
And that was city fund? Do you want to get it straight? That was city fund?
It's on that other sheet that you got here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you. So you're talking.
One down, uh, it was 28 of 30, um, South L was purchased with city fund. And the last one on the corner was also purchased with city fund. Yeah, that.
Right, the four, 24, 26, 30, 32.
So that's three properties that were bought by city funds. So that's three properties that are bought by city funds. So over to the on K Street. The only one in that block, you go in, the only one there that was bought with CRA funds is the one on the corner.
Which corner? K Street?
That number, which her finger is.
And the other one was city funds? The other two were city funds? So the only city funds were those two on K Street and one on L?
No, it's on, and this, if you look in this column of our.
Seriously, okay, 501 like that. Oh, okay, thank you. I mean, we spent a million.
Yeah, I think that all of you. So as you had requested back in January, the building official and I walked through the properties and sort of gave a visual assessment of where they were. Some of you actually visited those about two months, three months later. That in order to know where we're going in the direction, we hired a local contractor on value destruction to give us their estimate of the cost, estimate what it would take in all the buildings how it will occur, what would be required in order to pay these occupants inspection. I'll start with the easy one first. Seven oh four First Avenue South, 710. We still look for various molecules when this ground disappeared then, which affected the CRA line farthest to the west on First. That building was one more over the little one. That building was not inhabited when it was purchased. It was being used sort of off and on by the property owners, open an office. His recommendation was that one should be condemned and turned down. Estimates for rehabilitation are exceeded its value.
That was the one that's on the, that's actually on the corner of First Avenue and K Street.
A little bitty one next to the corner.
Up on K or?
It's on the alley.
Is it the First Avenue South address or?
It's the first, okay, it's the, it's that one.
It's the 710 First Avenue South. The one above it, the long skinny one, which has two buildings, that has a fairly high rehabilitation number, I think $300,000. This guy, significant structural issues. That building also was not inhabited when it was purchased. It was probably under some sort of rehabilitation where it's never materialized, but its cost of rehabilitation is far exceeded what its structural value is. The one on the corner, corner, which is a duplex, is not out of the question to be recovered. So that one was inhabited?
Yes, it was.
Was.
It was, it was.
Was inhabited. I'm not sure if both units were inhabited, but there were tenants there. It's not, all of its systems are in failure. It's got termite issues, that's a minor. It's not beyond being saved. The price is fairly expensive. You've got itemized list page one. If we go back over to L Street, moving south from the little cottage next to the parking lot, that up to.
Right there.
That will, that one is in fairly decent shape.
That's 24 South though.
And that one's owned by the CRA and it's not, it's still going to be expensive to rehab it and bring it up to code because of, you know, what issues have evolved over time. That one wasn't inhabited when it was purchased, I believe.
Yes.
It's in relatively okay shape. The quadruplex is also in somewhat the same situation. It's not the worst in the world. It does have significant unidentified termite damage. There is termite evidence throughout it. How extensive it is, we really couldn't tell that there was no exploratory work and I did not want to contact here on the buildings too much.
And it was inhabited?
It was inhabited. The next one, I believe, did have tenants in it, but that building literally is kind of melting into the ground. Its entire steel plate structure system is in failure. Its estimate was in the $300,000 range to bring it back. It would easily qualify for condemnation under our building code requirements. The last building, which is, I think, two or three units, we were not able to get inside, no one was a contractor. That one has been broken into numerous times. There's evidence of structural failure. That one has a pretty high estimate for rehabilitation, but it's, it's sort of borderline whether it would be makes economic sense to bring that back to life or not. So there are three that, based on the value and also the recommendations, Bella, that are really presenting a fairly significant financial challenge that we brought back. The other three likely have a strong case to be made to keep those, whether they will be financially feasible in terms of what rents you could get from them and a return for what you will have expended to restore them is debatable. They, you know, we would probably have to subsidize it heavily if they were considered to be affordable or were 10,000, that's a policy decision that you can get to us. What we struggle with is that sales tax money, which has to be used for city infrastructure, city facilities, was a funding that was transferred to this area by the properties that are under this area's control or city money. And so how the unit in itself doesn't appear to really meet that requirement. So we had to figure out how to pay back our sales tax fund in order to then free up those buildings to be restored, which is then another couple hundred, two, three thousand dollars a piece. Those three buildings are likely in the million dollar range to have them at an appropriate level to meet its certificate. Disagreement's inspection to be inhabited and we could figure out possibly what would be a late worth market rate, which is kind of all over the place right now. And then we all know that we've done ledger services in Seventeen South M Street, that building is in very, very good shape. It was, did not have it assessed to have it converted back to a residence. Despite of the money that's been spent to convert some office for deal construction. And I didn't really see a need at this point to have it assessed to see what it would cost to put it back and see if it's coming off. You cannot assess either the city's chamber of commerce doing, there are radiational stats in it now and what its future might be, could be in the number of things. So you've got some of the lay of the land and as Dana mentioned, the CRA parts of the large blue one at the northeast corner of First Avenue and K with all the trees is a nice location to create a beer garden, a artist commune of a sort, where some of the buildings we moved over there and create a nice collection of an experiential space. The landscape there is very nice with some beautiful trees there. More than at least two, if not three, possibly four structures could be moved there and create anywhere from a six to 10 units, which would be allowed, and then also have space for this outdoor experience space. And so it'd be easier to maybe answer your questions or at least take your questions and I have to do further research, get back to you. And then if you have any decisions about certain buildings, I've already shared with Dana the estimates of how it costs to come from debate and so any scenario of were to include building, they would incorporate, incorporate that funding requirement. And then the developer is going to use the performer to see whether, you know, what the financial implications are facing, maybe that's driven or arrive from a certain scenario and take that into account. So.
Just one question is, are, do we have the historical information on any of these properties? Were they designed by anybody famous? Is there anything specific to these properties that gives it more value that you can't just see?
I've been told we don't have verification of this and so it could be make worse one more, but it likely has some ability in some way. The building on the northeast corner of L and First Avenue, which is a three-part building.
Too far, stop, no, go down.
Keep going down.
There you go.
This one. There is a possibly African-American female architect involved in it. There was a recording of some, some famous song that took place in some portion of it. I can't recall who that person was and somebody else, some other person of local variety may have lived there.
Is there any way to like track down what's real and what's not?
I don't have a way to ascertain, I'm going on local lore. Had some of that. There's not a lot of definitive information in our, there's a series of what they called, the basic housing records, they're like directories and they show who lived there, but they don't say who visited there. We don't have records of who might have leased there or spent, I think we were, and I hate to bring up this word, we were a seasonal community for a long time. People tended to visit Lakefront Beach, hang around for a while and all kinds of things might have happened here that we don't, aren't aware of. And so I look at it, it's highly likely that it can be true. It may not be true. The building itself doesn't only have a great deal of architectural value. Now, what they, what Dana's group did to the building, which would not be allowed from a preservation standpoint, made it look really, really handsome. And then under this fairback proposal, it had like a little three-story tower building on Hurst area. I don't know if that actually fit in what is actually required parking for that building. But that's the only one that I know that has some associations with something that may be important.
And may new questions?
Is there a way, I guess a two-part question. Obviously, a big chunk of this is that these buildings are older in various states of disrepair, shall we say, and cost money to bring them back. That's the negative side. The, the potential positive side is simply they're older buildings and they look like older buildings. And as we make more and more newer and modern buildings, the value in some very unquantifiable sort of way, you know, one of the consistent pieces that came out of Dana's presentation is there's a lot of interest in the historic downtown. People in the town care about that and I think that's fairly widespread. So my question is, can we somehow incorporate, recognize something or other that very non-quantifiable value of some of the older buildings? Probably some of them is just no role, but, but the appearance has some value. And, and then the second part of the question, is there any way, for instance, with the beer garden? Part of what makes, what might make something like that of interest to people is it does have some older structure.
That's what he just said.
And contributes some economic value, still hard to quantify, but I guess that's my very fuzzy, but is there a way to?
Of course, I mean, that block where the beer garden might happen, from an historical preservation standpoint, has this great deal more historic integrity from the parking lot and the sculpture garden of the cultural council to the south. Its integrity is more intact, its footprints are more intact and there are other buildings on that lot that are in pretty sad shape. But it, it contextually is stronger in the sense that if we were to add historic buildings to it, it would reinforce that fabric. Now, what I will work with Dana on is if there are choices made to restore some buildings, as long as they stay in an income-producing scenario, which can be residential rental to the office. Two things that could happen to the prey, actually the example, let's say that one of them costs $300,000 to restore. It could apply for a complex credit of 20%. That is a credit toward your tax liability, not your income. So we're spending $300,000 to restore them would generate a $60,000 tax credit on the federal level. And you combine that with, say, a property tax reserve group or ABLE, that might help make it more affordable. It may not make it work financially without us sticking some money into it to help subsidize its restoration. But as long as it stays income-producing, there are some otherwise unavailable avenue avenues. There are state money, and we talked about this three years ago, there's a granted aid and it used to be as high as half a million dollars. It could even more, the, I was last time I worked with this with the restoration of the courthouse downtown West Palm Beach, they got two of them. If the city were a partner in it, and that money is not just limited to nonprofits or government agencies, we could get state money to help facilitate a preservation plan of all that. It would be complicated, it might take some time, but that could help bring down the restoration costs for a private developer to take on combinations of a grant aid, some kind of cultural aspect to it, which could be if it were a literary option or a place for artists that are maybe the art, you know, create a lake or beach, artisanal beer, whatever. You combine all the little pieces together, it, it could start making some actual sense, but there are going to be a lot of pieces and it would be complicated, but it's possible.
Right. And something that did get talked about at the Saturday thing, I think, prefer, was that there was quite a bit of support that those historic structures don't have to be, in, in terms of the opinions of the community, don't have to stay as residential, they could be other uses. There seem to be sort of, I don't know whether that helps or some, maybe.
Well, if you convert to a use other than residential, there are costs involved, the occupancy, the agent compliance, accessibility requirements. There could be fire rated, fire rating issues. There are some complications for historic problems, but I think that I don't want to insert my personal opinion, I have phrases. The option of collecting some properties, historic structures in that beer garden location is probably going to get at creating the strongest preservation statement that ensures the protection of fabric, allows a greater latitude to do something more creative with the other parcel. And then also deal with, you know, whatever we might do, whether it's a two-story parking garage or three or no parking garage on K Street, on that little sliver of land where Dana had shown some townhouses. And again, that block, that middle block between K and L does have the strongest integrity and character. This is already, they're mostly in pretty good shape, those residential structures in that block, south of the parking lot and the cultural council sculpture garden.
Do we imagine if we move, if we have a beer garden, those would remain residential around the beer garden because it's a public space? I'm like, we want to convert to either artists.
I think that you could get it, and that might be one avenue in our R and P. There are some quirky, interesting people here that might like that activity going on. There have been requests in some of the live work, artists' lots for things that are of that nature, which really aren't appropriate at that location because it would be an open space. These are the townhouses that are across from the hatch. So you never know. And it wouldn't be an overly large type thing, I don't believe, and it might just be a few units. And the other parts are office or they are the live work. Maybe one of them becomes an artist studio and the artist lives on the second floor. That quadruplex or, the quadruplex is the only residential piece there that provides artist housing. The other buildings that are there, one's a beer garden with the service areas.
Right, you should have to have that.
Maybe the other building or two is actually studio space. And having open studio space is relatively economical to convert to that type of office use or super solid or office, or retail, then it would be if it were split up as like formal offices. And so, and we are already kind of quickly mixed in Lakefront Beach. That's why all of our commercial districts are mixed use except for the industrial part of Congress. Every single one of them allows residential, commercial, retail, personal services. That's like, including your traditional industrial allows residential to.
Is there something that like inspired the beer garden? Is there a specific example that came on?
I don't know, but there, I, I've been to one in Atlanta. It wasn't my idea. I just thought of starting working. The idea a couple of years ago was to create a space, there was a crying need for artists living. I said, well, that's probably a good location. It's kind of cool. It's that open space. We could collect some buildings there and create some artists with work options. And then the beer garden came out of a shred. I've been to one in Atlanta. There's probably one, there's one in Key West, but I haven't been to it.
There's one, somebody, and I can't remember now who, somebody sent it to me and I went and looked it up. I want to say somewhere in Kentucky and it's similar. It's in a fairly downtown area. And it, I think it started out as a nursery or something, so you could get plants, but then they started adding some other things. It seems to be quite popular.
And it wouldn't necessarily have to be a beer garden. There's a family that has a really cool farm in Montana. They make their own wine out of, made those in a business and it's really cool. And the wine's sweet. I'm like a crazy fan of sweet wine, but it's, it's made out of Florida stuff. It's artisanal winery and it's actually pretty cool. And something like that could work there as well.
There's another example similar to that in Los Ahachi that has, it's like a, it's a farm, but they have a, a big steel structure with shade. And if you like a, a market, it's kind of like an outdoor. I can't even remember the name of it, but it's, it's, I think I.
And we have some of the zoning that we already love, we have these specialty glory distillery, um, which slides through the winery. I don't know if all of it will be made there, but, um, it's not a huge leap, uh, to amend or Aaron and I can create it, figure out how to allow that to happen and not be burdensome on the neighborhood, but it is what it costs on your residential one. More intensive activities might not be appropriate, but. Well, we're already struggling with, uh, you know, some, um, beer gardens or that type of activity of outdoor entertainment. And that, you know, can get out of hand in Lake Worth Beach. And we have complaints that are excessive about, you know, I moved here and there wasn't any loud, loud entertainment now there is. But in the downtown district, and so, um, I guess we'll cross, you know, cross the Noah's Orme's Bridge at some point. Uh, in our discussions, I'll address that.
Um, Carmen, you had said that Commissioner, the real commissioner, like, had something to say.
Yes, she apologized for her absence today, and she is out of town. And so she left a note to share her thoughts about, um, some of her thoughts on the properties. So on, um, at the property of twenty-four South L Street, um, she, what she's done with each property was look at the value on Zillow of those, of those, uh, properties and then compared it to the cost of renovation. And so with twenty-four South L Street, she saw that the value on Zillow was four hundred thousand dollars. And so her statement is, it is a great historical building with amazing character. And I'm, I am in favor of revitalizing it as it could be a future home for a family. Uh, at twenty-six South L Street. Right, so which is the multi-unit with the four units. On Zillow, uh, there's a value of nine hundred thousand dollars. And she states it's, it too is a great historical building with amazing character. And I am in favor of revitalizing it as it could be a great rental unit for single people. At thirty South L Street, um, the Zillow, Zillow value is three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, which in, which in nearly the cost, which is nearly the cost to renovate it and feel it is not a great return on investment. Thirty-two South L Street, Zillow value is five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, with the renovation cost of three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, to me, it's not a great investment. At twenty-five South K Street, Zillow value, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. I think this plot could be better used. And lastly, seven zero four First Avenue South and seventeen First Avenue South, I am in support of demolition. So out of the seven properties, it looks like there are two properties that she would like to see re-revitalized. And that's twenty-four South L Street and twenty-six.
Yeah, this, I'm looking at the chart, it has twenty-six after, there's no purchase price, thirty South L Street, it's one and a, one point.
Is that one million, does that apply to twenty-six, thirty and thirty-two?
Together.
How these prices came three years ago, I do not even.
I believe there were, um, twenty-six, thirty and thirty-two all came from the same owner. And so I believe that a million fifty.
You know, and I just have to say, I mean, we're talking about, you go in there, the sills are rotten, it's melting, it's, but we've paid a million dollars for it, I, I just. I, um, this is, this was a very difficult issue for me. When the, um, as, and I think you probably all know, my office is at the White Building on the corner there, and my house is two blocks below. So this is really my neighborhood. And, um, when they started evicting people, it made me crazy. Because we had at least twen- twenty units downtown, everybody, people lived there. And I have to vent for a minute, people lived there, it was fairly affordable. It made the downtown, and there was, it was, it was alive, people were coming and going all the time. Now, when I come from the office down to my two blocks, down to my house, it's a dead zone. And I feel like, and I'm going to say it, I think the CRA, and this is, I'm very public about this, created a blight in my neighborhood. And I'm very upset about it. And, you know, now we're looking at a situation where we have all these buildings. You know, can we ever recoup that money from the developer as we go forward? I hope so, that one point seven million we have to pay back some now. So I'm, this is a real disturbing thing to me because it was, I feel such a blunder on this, on the CRA's part, and I've said this to Joan.
Mayor, may I interrupt? So I, and the, the CRA has taken a, a beating on this, but, um, I was not overly supportive of this initially, um, but I follow the direction of our management. But the city had this legal role in this happening as a CRA.
Then, uh, then whoever, whoever, that's fine.
I think the, the, the blame has to be shared.
Okay, and I'm happy to do that. Here we sit. It was a horrible thing to evict all those people, it really was, and now we've got buildings that have not been lived in, and so they're deteriorating. They're not air-conditioned, they're not lived in, there's no electricity, we could have been having people in there, um, keeping them alive, paying rent, paying electricity, paying water, using our services. And we decide some, some decision was made somewhere that that was not a good idea. And the response that I got when I asked about it was, we are not landlords, well, we sure are landlords, we own the casino. We do own other buildings that we moved down, and so I, I, this is just my, and I, I understand it, it's, it's probably worth it, but I just have to, this is my one chance to vent about this in public, because it was just horrible. My neighborhood went from a vibrant neighborhood to a, to a ghetto, to a, to an empty spot, and I'm very angry about it, as you can probably.
That's the fight, I mean, some of those properties, like I, I look at twenty-five South K, and I think that's a beautiful house, and you see it in the current, in the condition.
It's terrible, it's terrible. Having said that, I mean, you have to move forward, and you're, that's again, one of the reasons I even ran for mayor in the first place was because of this debacle. But it happened and it's over. I love the idea of moving them to that corner, it's a good, I mean, they were used to be a big house there to stretch, so, so, when that got demolished, I guess it was a wreck, but it was such a cool building. So that's a perfect spot, there are grown trees, can we get a, can we get, my favorite building of those that called, is the, is the quadruplex. I lived on, at one ten South B Street, and there's the identical, this was a thing that they did, there's a lot of them in the city. And I lived on the upper floor of one ten South B Street. And the breeze coming through, it was an, it's a wonderful, it was a wonderful, wonderful building, so I would hate to see it just gone. Can we get it on that lot? I don't know, there's a lot of trees, that you think we can? Okay, so in terms of, you know, I have to. Like a boulevard. I don't know what we have against North Pole Pine, that's another story. They did not fall down, it became bare, and then Gene Joyner said they won't grow back, and you know what they did? All the branches started coming back out, so there you go. So, I mean, you know, having faced the reality of what we are, I think, you know, I mean, I have to agree with, you know, it's a bitter pill for me to swallow, I have to say that. But the, the quadruplex and the one right on the edge of the, you know, the twenty-four, which although historic, has aluminum siding on it. It's a nice building, there was a nice old family living there, they had little toys in the front yard, but they're gone. So if we have to do something, I mean, if there's, if we can have a plan that incorporates some of them on the site, that's great. If we can't, I will never vote to demolish those two buildings. Because they're salvageable, they're architecturally important to the city, the, 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 the two-story one especially. And I think the idea of putting them, like the yes-to-year village right downtown, right? You know, and we contributed a lot of billions to yes-to-year village. So that ma- that makes the most sense to me, is if we're gonna, if they're not going to be used integrally into. Thank you, in the, in the plan, then I think the best, the next best alternative would be to move as many as we can to that spot and, you know, make it whether, you know, we talk about the, we're an artist city, but we're not, you know, we, this might be an opportunity to support the artists. Um, apparently, we didn't care about making money because we evicted everybody. So that's my spin on that. Uh, I think it's a terrible shame what happened to some of these buildings, but I'm also a practical person. So are we, we don't, are we voting tonight on anything? Okay.
Dana is still going to go back and that, there are two scenarios where we move, um, buildings to the west and then where we build to the east, um, and I believe that they're going to crunch those numbers, right, and come back to us.
I also think another, just one more, it could be annoying. Um, it's my turn. Nothing personal, the corner of, um, Lake and M, that little, the green building, Dr. Green's building, that we talk about, the Chamber of Commerce building, I think I would like to see something, I would like to see that preserved. Because that is a, that is a building that I think that should be our visitor center, I think that building should be where people go. It's right downtown, it used to be the visitor center, I don't even know what it's being used for now. So that, that's just my own personal, that building on that corner is, has been there for a long time. It's, you know, architecturally lovely, yeah, it was redone, it's all been redone, and it has a great mural on the site.
If you rip down all the signage and all the extra clutter.
Yeah, there's some weird stuff outside of it now, but, um, is that, just so we know where we are, i- is that the orange on that picture? And is that not where the civic space in the five? So we have a little problem there. And I would assume that that building, I assume it's Ciner block or something, it's not very mobile.
But the area, the blue, the old, um, round third is, could be, they could. Well, it was around the third years ago, the last was. It's been a number of things, so, uh, the lizard. Designers drive in and dive, um, so I mean, that's another possibility for the public space. If, if they wrap the building, it's not going to happen, it's just a dream of mine, that they could integrate that building in the corner and have an open space next to it.
Not impossible to possibly, and, and, you know, there are facade activities done all the time. You prefer like a certain destiny of your store, but you build behind it. The Chamber of Commerce has a huge amount of area behind it. So it's not impossible to think, and it's got a little bit of public space in the front. So it's not impossible to like incorporate some portion of that building to something else.
Now, as far as the old to that hideout, the little building that's there, I know years ago someone was trying to do something, and they were told they couldn't do anything because it was historically, are we going to demolish that too?
It's condemnable.
I mean, but it's, it's, the inconsistency is a little troubling. Um, you know, now it's okay to demolish.
Well, I'm not saying it's okay, it's just that that building, its condition was so deteriorated before it was purchased, and there were some really.
No, it's, it's a mess, I understand that, no, but, um, you know, somebody wanted to do something years ago and they couldn't because they would, I don't forget what they wanted to do, but because it was historic, you know, so it seems, and again, I'm being nasty here and I apologize. But, you know, it's, it's historic and you have to be really careful unless the city wants to buy it.
There is some, yeah, I think.
And that's just, that's me as a citizen speaking, like anger, like frustration, but, um.
Well, I, I share, because, you know, I, I knew some of the people who were in one or another of the buildings, and, um, I was pretty happy to get them put out of it. Also, um, I did walk through with, with, uh, Peter Ringel and, and William, those. I'm not a building person, I'm reasonably practical, I, and I don't mind getting dirty, so I poked in a little bit more. I don't have any way to assess costs, you know, I'm not a building G C or anything like that. But to me, some of the things that looked a little scary, you know, piles of termite droppings, well, every house. You need to know more, you know, how structurally bad that is before you decide. So I'm right with you on twenty-four and twenty-six, but I might be a little more generous about wanting to keep a couple more. Obviously, I'd have to defer the, the contractors, but I'd say where we have the option, let's err on the side of keeping rather than the side of demolishing.
Isn't sixteen South L not the one that we're talking about, the one on the, uh?
One is, I'm trying to figure that out. Can you help us?
Well, if you, with a blue start, there's the, the Lake Avenue, the building I'm in. Oh, no, that's, yeah, there, um, the, there's a parking lot behind my building, it's the first, right, yeah. The first little cottage, which is, there's that row of trees in the middle of the parking lot. Well, what's sixteen?
Where's sixteen South L? I don't, I can't in that image figure out.
Yeah, it doesn't look like.
Well, there was a, there was a. I've got, sorry, the one that you, you all really like is twenty sixteen South L. And then it's steep and it flips, the next, the quadruplex is twenty-four.
Sixteen is the parking lot.
No, that's not where.
Is, is that sixteen that? I mean, I think we could look it up. Is that hidden by the trees, is that? And what do we know about that one? I don't know if we talked about that one, is that?
I don't think so.
Here, that was my glass.
Well, I, I'm looking at the, the maps now, was it, yeah, twenty-four, I guess.
Sixteen South L, the CRA bought that.
It's a park.
They seen it for ten years.
There's no building.
Right, they bought it from my landlord.
So is there something, what, that you're looking for from us tonight, William?
Well, I think, kind of want to know, um, what our consensus of approach is. And what I'm hearing so far is, I think what argument Commissioner Malaga has made, it appears the mayor reluctantly, and I kind of have to agree with her, is sort of on the same page. And that those two buildings seem to have, um, the strongest interest in being preserved in one way or the other in scenarios that were studied, or other in situ, they're moved to the east, they're moved to the west. If they're moved to the west and go to the CRA's, they can lot, there might be an option to reconstruct one of the consisting buildings or some other, uh, sympathetic structure that sort of goes in with that for the beer garden aspect. The other one, two, three, other five buildings are at a stage of, um, decay and disrepair. That economically, it's going to be very challenging, unless you have a very determined person who just loves historic preservation. Maybe that's financially working, it's going to take a loss on what the return on investment might be.
Is, is, and then, you know, that's a long shot certainly, and it would have to be somebody both with some means and some attachment to Lake Worth and some attachment to old buildings. Starting, it is probably one of those on the planet or something, but would there be any way that we could put the word out that, hey, if, if you are one of these?
Word has been out.
It's been out three years.
And they haven't exactly been.
No one's wanted, no.
Um, somebody wanted to move seventeen, seventeen South and Storage, which is a nice building. Um, somebody, two different parties wanted to move the quadruplex, both to locations that would require historic waivers. One fell for it because the other one wanted to jack up, make the three-story building, the parking park or underneath it. I'm like, well, that kind of defeats the purpose of it being a store, but it's going to be moved like six blocks away. Uh, there has been no interest demonstrated in any of the other ones. We did look at some sites west of railroad tracks that the city owned to see possibly moving them there, uh, as affordable housing. But we, it would have been less expensive to build a replica of it than move it and try to restore what we had based on the recognition.
I'm so sick of living in those empty buildings every day, I know it's telling.
So can you, I'm just curious about this facade.
They can, they can, in London, you go down the streets.
There's a wonderful example in DC where there's a whole room of townhouses, that's essentially, I believe, northwest of, uh, the White House, where unfortunately, they inserted this thing that looks like a gigantic great battleship behind it. And you can sort of see it from the sky, but walking on the street, it still appears to be a whole. Behind it and you can sort of see it, it's kind of walking on the street, it still appears to be a whole series of townhouses, but. You get really far away, it's a multi story office building, it's like a straight big green cloud. It could be done much better than that.
Would uh Dana be able to knock up a designer's, uh just to show us if it's even something to consider?
We can pass it on, but what what I would like um from you, and I'm speaking, I think a little bit for um Carmen is. If we do, we'll have to encourage to the best of our ability, the two buildings that are in the best shape. They need attention yesterday, they need to be tented. They need to be secured a little better and they need some minor repair and maintenance, just so that they can hold on until we. Have a better plan of what to do.
Right.
Um I I think the termite um. Prevention is actually provided as an estimate in there. Since we built the buildings. As part of, I I asked Jeff to provide that as an estimate. I think it's on all of them.
Oh, yeah, number twelve thirteen five, thirteen five for that little house? I just had a, I just had a estimate on my two buildings.
Well, fortunately, if you have. That's representing people like for beach.
Well, maybe they could.
Able to give us a benevolent discount.
Let's hope.
I mean, my my house is bigger than this. My house is the house and cottage behind it and a deck in the middle and the estimates are like twenty five hundred dollars, so.
They're also repairing.
Yes, completely tented.
But this includes repairs as well.
No, 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 we're looking at line line item twelve.
Well, I'll just return my damage.
Thirteen five?
It says.
Yes, repair.
Repair.
When I just got a, I mean, I just got these estimates.
Well, and the other um. The quadruplex is only ten thousand. Rupert's, I'm looking at the shade, I'm searching now, no, this is.
And tree if needed, number thirteen.
Yeah, so maybe maybe the other one's just in more shape and that's why.
Doesn't matter what shape it is.
It says repair, Angela.
I'll give you the name of the guy I cut the estimates from.
Get to a deal.
It's just such a deal. Damage repair intent needed, I mean, if we're, it seems like we're gonna assume that we need to tent them.
Yeah.
Uh yeah.
And then it's a sad situation, it really is um. So I think.
It's in the back, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, the estimates include. And allow us to not only treat the project, but also the case. So I'm not sure where the money's come from. But I would, I don't encourage that, at least ten thousand two building.
All right, and and also close off openings to keep coming in the next day kind of thing too.
It's hard to do.
Yeah.
Oh, please, it's a nightmare. It's horrible. And my place is so complicated with dogs and cats and. Trimming everything around it, I don't want to do it. So, okay, so what we're, the direction we're giving staff to go back with is.
We're all interested in twenty four and twenty six, we think tenting is a pretty darn good idea.
Get a new, I'll give you the name of the people that gave my estimates.
I like the location. Some of the buildings could be condemned by the building official based on the information that we have. There would be a report given to the H R P B that the distribution is to this point. In preparation of all this, and I have to check. This um solid waste authority gave a grant to the CRA to fund the demolition of buildings that whatever was left. Because if we were really trying to encourage and relocate it. I don't know whether, I know that Joan hasn't spent that money, because we have done any demolitions. What her timeframe is to utilize that money, but it would be who our efforts if we. Got some lots cleaned up um that it would help. I think in the experience of the street, if some of those bad villains were gone and we got them at least sawed it and.
Sodded, there's another word I hate.
Well, we could, we could do ground covers, but um they take a lot of work on it, we can try, but that money I think is still available, but it's a fairly short window.
Let's find out.
We will lose it, so.
Because I know within the neighborhood, there's been a couple of problems with people breaking in, which is so.
Well, there's one that had to be, we couldn't get it because it's been broken into so many times.
Little yellow one on First Avenue, so, yeah.
Madam Mayor. I apologize, uh Joan Oliva is on and she has her hand up, so I guess you'd like to speak.
Oh, great.
Hi, Joan.
Hey, can you all hear me?
Yeah, you poor thing.
You're a little echoey, but we can hear you.
Okay, good, um yes, we do have a grant that is still um available to do the um the demo for. Um I believe, and I'm not exactly sure which ones uh which particular properties that we had put on the original. Um application, but I can go back and look and see which ones those are and see if those can match up with um. With what's on William's list and then um ask for some more time from the solid waste authority, if that's something that the commission would like us to do.
Joan, could you also, if if your list from the solid waste authority doesn't match the list of the one, two, three?
We can add an amendment.
Yes, include the ones that we do have.
Yes.
Okay, so looking to tenting.
The two.
The two.
And general repair and maintenance, so they they don't deteriorate anymore hopefully in the next. Because even my two, I don't, if even the process that we're on, we're probably not gonna see a project break ground for two.
Please, yeah, which is why I freaked out when they evicted everybody with a no plan, you just, I'll say it again.
They had a plan, they would like the plan.
No, there was no, but then they didn't, when they bought them and they're victim, there was no plan, then they put out the R F. So and I it's I'm beating a dead horse, I apologize.
Plan, but the plan fell apart quickly, because there was a proposal to a hotel downtown, they need a parking.
Right, 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 right.
To buy this property, facilitate service parking. And then interim to what made with the parking garage of the hotel, but then it was a trucking garage. And that location wasn't the first idea and the thing happened, so then the R F came about and then we got where we are.
Yeah, all right, and here we are.
There we are.
Pretty good history.
Lost twists and turns Lake River Beach.
Oh, I'm telling you.
We wouldn't have it any other way.
Um, okay, so. I think, did anybody else have any comments? Okay, it's a sad moment, but it's realistic.
I I just would reiterate, it sort of like you reiterated the unhappiness with how this all came about. I would. Reiterate my, you know, if we can expand into one more building that we hang on to. We can find what to do it, I would pick the least of the evils and try. Find the money.
I have a question for Mr. Waters, when Dana was looking at moving, potentially keeping and moving that some of the structures, was it just those two or were there other ones that he? That when you guys were talking, seemed could possibly be viable?
We're gonna evaluate some other ones, like if there's some little accessory buildings that may not be in a worse shape. Um thank, but again, looking at. Combining the relocation. Um it's probably most efficacious financially and from a feasibility standpoint to move, that's we're gonna be moving the two that we like. And then reconstruct other secondary accessory or smaller buildings or even a cottage on that same property, so it has a complementary goal. And try to relocate, the other ones, three of them are in really structure bad shape, but probably to be moving the top half of the building. And leaving the whole ground, that's been done before, I mean. Slide the building and you. It'll be a dozen tented for us to say, okay.
Build a new building.
Replicate something that looks similar to it next to the other ones.
Yeah, and who pays for the demolition? That's the grant, that's the grant, okay. Okay. Um I mean, I'm, listen, I'm glad that we're moving forward, I'm glad that we had this meeting tonight and that we're using the the treasure code, so we're making progress. Yeah, um I've been looking at that, those empty buildings for three years now and I just.
One thing that comes to mind in this is. As we move it to demolition, since it's looks like at least a number of them, that's where they're gonna wind up. Let's make sure that we do a lot of outreach into the community, so people know, hey, this is coming. Here's kind of the reasoning, here's, you know, so that people may even post it on the building or something so that.
And take, I would also like to take good photographs of them in sites that we can.
If it's condemned like in the route, it would be posted with red text saying this building has been condemned, it's gonna come inside.
I think Chris is talking about more of a public.
Buildings that will be condemned will be presented to the H R P B, here's a list, this is why these are being condemned, that will be presented to the preservation board. If public wants to make comment about it, they probably could. Um and you know, I think just tonight is gonna stir up some feathers and so we'll. Deal with that tomorrow.
Mm hmm, I'll think about that tomorrow.
If public had a plan.
I'll never go hungry again.
Listen to a journal.
Yep.
I'm fine.
Yes.
Know, anybody else have anything they want to say before we second a second?
I appreciate your um direction, I think Dana got a lot of um. Good clear, so I expected things.
They were not, I mean, all those plans, there were.
And I don't think it's gonna be my, I think moving heaven or earth, to make some tweaks to the L V R to facilitate a lot of what they're talking about. Cool statue here, the other three are coming.
Okay, yeah. See y'all tomorrow, do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor?